I will call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I will, I will read the closed session topics. Closed session agenda is recommended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with labor negotiator, I'm sorry, conference with labor negotiator, unrepresented employee superintendent, 2.5 conferences, labor negotiator, CSEA Buddha management, 2.6 conference with legal counsel, existing litigation and 2.7 anticipated litigation. Is there any public comment on any closed session topics? Here, there's no public comments, so we'll adjourn to closed session. I will call this meeting to order. Welcome. Our student board member Maria Velazquez is joining us via Zoom. Any of the public wanting to provide public comment on any items this on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form. It's located on the look on the table in back of the room. Please hang your form to the administrative assistant daily smart before the item comes up for on the agenda. Please fill out a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone at the stand located from the room. Right now, I'd like to introduce the interpreter. Linguistic interpreter and translation will be interpreting the meeting into Spanish this evening via Zoom online platform. There's an option to select the Spanish audio, audio at the bottom of the Zoom window. For members of the public who are with us in person this evening and would like to listen to the interpretation of the Spanish, you may pick up the headphones from the table located in the back of the room. Linguistic interpreter and translation interpretar la reunión en español esta noche a través de la plataforma en línea Zoom. Hay una opción para seleccionar audio en español en la parte inferior de la ventana de Zoom. Para membros del público que quieren estar con nosotros en persona día esta noche y les gustaría escuchar la interpretación de la reunión en español, pero pueden recoger audífonos de la mesa que está encontrada en el fondo de la sala. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording of webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by joining. I will report action taking a closed session. The board took the following action in closed session on a more bone on a motion by board member Vegas and a second by board member case personnel of the vote voted seven zero to take action on the proof settlement agreement between district and parties representing case number case only oh eight each case number two zero two one one two zero three seven five seven zero. Well, this is an important announcement that I'm going to be making right now. The board united unanimously voted to appoint Mr. Kirk Schrum as the next superintendent of Visalia Unified School District. Mr. Strum will be officially will officially begin working alongside interim superintendent Cardoza on May sixteenth to twenty twenty two and will assume the full responsibility of leading our district on July one. Mr. Strum's employment contract will be placed on the March twenty second, twenty twenty two agenda for approval. Mr. Strum comes for us from Atlanta, Georgia area, where he currently serves as the chief school leadership officer for the Hearn County School District, home to forty three thousand K twelve grade students attending fifty two schools. During his ten years of district level leadership, he has successfully increased student achievement. He felt developed systems to deliver consistent, high quality instruction, led initiatives that improve facilities and supported other leaders to create many opportunities for our students. Throughout his career as a teacher, site administrator and district leader, Mr. Strum has modeled strong personal character to carry out his vision for high quality education for all students. I would like to share a couple of quotes that stood out from his letters of recommendation or references. Chief Schools Officer Natalie Means Henderson stated, I observe, I observe Kirk to be a leader who led with transparency and with student focus. Sheila Burnett, Full County Board of Education President shared during Kirk's time as the area executive director, our school districts saw improved academic results and opportunities for students due to his leadership that include included increased graduation rates for every student subdue. The implementation of that of the individual determination program in each learning community, high school, the completion of the first continuous international baccalaureate pathway pathway in the school system and the first college for focusing on Hispanic students. On behalf of the Visalia Unified School District Board of Trustees, we want to thank our staff, students, parents, community for their input during the search process. We feel very strongly that Mr. Strum reflects the qualities and characteristics identified by those groups. We look forward to working with him to continue to move the district in a positive direction. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Strum to Visalia Unified School District. Wow, you ought to come here more often. Mr. Strum, would you like to share a few thoughts?
Sure, thank you. Wow. Thrilled to be here, privileged. Thank you so much, Mr. President, board members, interim superintendent Cardoza. It's an honor to be appointed as superintendent of Visalia Unified School District. This community board and district values public education and is focused on creating futures for each student. And from the first moment I spoke to county superintendent higher about this district, I knew it was the place I wanted to call home. Creating futures for each student, we are privileged to serve as the most important work we could do. I believe in the unlimited capabilities of all students and of all staff to nurture those capabilities. That's the impactful work we get to do every day as educators, and that's the work I'm excited to engage in with each of you. When we listen to the voice of our community and what they hope and dream for all children, generate policy that solidifies the community's hopes and dreams and design systems to operationalize policy, we both create and ensure futures for every student. Throughout my career, I've worked as a classroom teacher, school administrator, district level leader to champion systems that identify and remove barriers for success and set the conditions for each student and adult to be successful. It's the work I'm passionate about and the work I'm ready to begin with you and this wonderful community. I look forward to meeting our teachers, leaders, staff and community over the next few days, listening to their stories and experiences, learn what they value about what makes their school and community special. And every day I commit to you to bring all of my efforts and my focus to the table to honor what we as a community value, to engage in this work with energy and transparency, focused on what is possible and making it happen because that is what each student and employee deserves from me and from each of us. Thank you, Mr. President and board for this opportunity. And, Mr. President, I turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Wow. It's been a while and we've been waiting for that moment. So thank you for those words. I will move on to item two point two, three revisions to the agenda and or enclosure items. And those enclosures are number seven, number eleven, twelve, sixteen and twenty seven, twenty seven. So we'll move on to number three point six, public recognition and we would like to call over Visalia Police Department representatives Nate Floss, Robert Meyer, Greece, Veracolas and Police Chief, are you going to join them? Okay. California Highway Patrol Representative, Mr. Polito, Elayo, Department of Justice Representative Neil Constran. And I'm going to say a few words and then go up and join them up at the podium, but I need to say that that we as a board, we felt it was important and and appropriate to bring in the law enforcement officers that worked on this case and solving the homicides that took place at Golden West High School parking lot. I think it's been about two, three years and it was very impactful in the wrong way. And I think that, you know, we as a school, we want to make sure that we have a good, safe environment. We, we have, we are a school community. We live here and we want a safe place for our students and our families. And what happened with the three homicides was very shocking and it affected our school community. And we want to thank you for your efforts in bringing in, making the arrests on these individuals. And what I'll do right now is I'm going to go through to the front and I'm going to go read the plaque. Okay, Chief Salazar, I'm going to present this to the police here. And the plaque reads with our grateful appreciation presented to Visalia Police Department in recognition of the multi-agency collaboration investigation that led to the arrest of individuals involved in twenty twenty murders of three teenagers at a local high school in Visalia. Visalia Unified School District Board of Trustees and the school community is proud of the hard work and dedication to our law enforcement partners who are diligent with this case. We have other plaques and the plaques are to have patrol Department of Justice. They all say the same thing. Okay. So gentlemen, if we can just get a plaque, Visalia PD. Right here. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, four point one spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Careco, Cardoza, sorry.
Thank you. All right. Again, I always have the pleasure of showcasing the great things that are happening in our district with our spotlight on VUSD. So I'm going to jump in here and I've got some folks are going to join me here on one of the last parts of this presentation. So right now I want to spotlight Goshen Elementary School. We had a group of nine Goshen Elementary students who competed in the TCOE Tarry County Office of Education History Day competition. The theme was debate and diplomacy in history, successes, failures and consequences. Seven of the nine students who competed are advancing to the state level. So I want to congratulate Goshen's team. On that team, on that team, we had fifth grade group exhibit, the Cuban Missile Crisis, our state finalists, Ever Nieto Castro and Julian Salguero. In fifth grade, we had the individual exhibit, also a state finalists, the occupation at wounded knee, Allison Nieto Escovel. In sixth grade, the group exhibit, a state finalist, executive order ninety sixty six, the Japanese intimate. It's Chris Laniford, Lanford, Jonathan Ruelis and Giovante Cantola. In sixth grade, individual exhibits, Ruth Badger Kingsburg, a feminist icon. State finalist is Tessa Van Dermon. And then Alworth Allensworth, a dream of utopia is Isabel Biggs. Fighting for equality was Delilah Gomez. So again, let's give these kids some applause and as they go to the state finals, we wish them a lot of luck. Another one that wanted to spotlight tonight was the Visalia Adult School. So the welding and basic construction classes at the adult school, they had an opportunity to participate at the World Ag Expo on February eighth through tenth. They had the opportunity to speak to potential employers, share their skills and knowledge, sell some of their projects, interact with the public. We want to thank their instructors, Larry Helen, Mitch Tennant and Tyler Hudson for all the great work they have done and sharing their expertise with our, I say, adult school students. Another spotlight is Viva Blunt Elementary School. I have a couple here actually for Viva Blunt. Viva Blunt second graders celebrated Tuesday, which was October twenty second, twenty twenty two. They did matching shirts, fun games around the number two, partner work, writing about when they were twenty two and hats and cakes, etc. So just lots of fun there, a lot of good spirit at that school. They also had a spotlight on kindness week at Viva Blunts. I wanted to share that as well. One little thing, I received a call from Tarry County Office of Education, the Planetarium, which is a resource that all of our schools go to and within the county. And they reached out and let us know that our little second graders from Viva Blunt Elementary were some of the best behaved kids they've ever seen come through there. So that's always good to hear. Another important spotlight is Redwood FBLA. Redwood hosted the twenty twenty two Future Business Leaders of America Central Section Leadership Conference. They haven't been able to do this in a couple of years. So two, twenty three schools, three hundred and eighty students and advisors from all over the Central Valley came to Redwood High School. So Mr. Avila and his team really put together a great opportunity for kids across our valley. It's good to see that happening again. So this is a great, great thing to celebrate as well. Our next spotlight, I'm going to call up Karina Mello and Jennifer McFadden to spotlight our Law and Justice Department at Redwood High School. So Karina Mello.
Good evening, board members, President Guerrero, and welcome to our new superintendent. I'm Karina Mello. I'm one of the work-based learning coordinators with the College and Career Readiness Department. And as you may know, I provide support to four of the district's academies, one of those being the Academy of Law and Justice. That's housed at Redwood High School. So tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce you to academy teacher Jennifer McFadden, who will be highlighting some of the academy's accomplishments.
Good evening, members of the board and esteemed colleagues. I'm happy to report to you this evening on some of the outstanding work that our academy students have been engaged in. To date, our program has graduated two classes of seniors, college and career ready. And we're on track to graduate a third class this year. Many of those students are now attending college with a goal of pursuing a career in the legal field. Thirty nine of our students have completed internships with industry partners. And I'm happy to tell you that this year we plan to continue to offer internships with the Tarry County District Attorney's Office and the Tarry County Public Defender's Office. Additionally, many of our students choose to participate in a program very near and dear to my heart, which is mock trial. And while all four comprehensive high schools at VUSD have a mock trial team, the two teams that Redwood fields are unique because they are comprised of almost entirely Academy of Law and Justice students. Currently thirty five of our academy students are involved in mock trial after school at Redwood High School. I am very pleased to report to you that just last month, our A team placed first in the county and our B team placed second in the county. I'll let two of our students' words speak for themselves. Riley Yount, a senior in the academy and a four-year mock trial student says, mock trial and the academy have created a positive environment with incredible people who share common interests. It has provided me with opportunities to exercise my skills I wanted to have had otherwise. Indira, a freshman, wants you to know that mock trial and the Academy of Law and Justice have created a safe space for me to belong. My intelligence is acknowledged and appreciated. I have never felt more at home in a school setting. We look forward to continuing our partnership between the Academy of Law and Justice, mock trial and VUSD for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer and Karina. We appreciate that. Great work going on there. And last but not least, we want to remind you, we still have a couple of our shows that will happen, one on April seventh with Golden West High School, Forty Second Street. And then Ridgeview Middle School will do High School Musical on May fifth through seventh. So get your tickets. The performances have been fantastic. So get involved. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Hi. Microphone's not working. The light's not going on. Not a question. I just want there you go. Technical difficulty. It's not a question. I just wanted to say so much to the Law Academy at Redwood. Working at the Public Defender's Office, we look forward to them visiting. They do a tour. They watch us in court for a day. They do a tour of the district attorney's office on the same day and then they do come and work in our offices and everyone just always love seeing them. And then I normally go and speak with them once a year. Even before I was on the board, they always invite people from our offices to come to the campus and talk to the kids and I think the biggest benefit of it, and I really hope that we start to see, see that is that we have a hard time recruiting for attorney jobs in both of those offices. And so many of these kids, they not only do they want to be DAs or public defenders, but they talk about coming back after law school to our community and really kind of they want to stay here. And so I just think it's fantastic that we, it'll help us, you know, it's like, kind of like this thing that starts at our, at our school level, but I think it will help benefit our community later on too. So great job, great work at Redwood on that academy.
Any other board member questions?
Just not a question, just a comment, and I could save it for later, but I think we'll probably lose half the people now that we've announced Mr. Strum. So I want to say it now, thank you to all of our library, media clerks and principals and staff for Read Across America Week. I know some celebrated it on the actual Dr. Seuss Day. You know, I think all of us were at GLC at some point on Friday reading. It's just a week that makes literacy fun and exciting. And I just know that our librarian, media clerks went out of their way to kind of make that a big deal at all the schools. So thank you to them.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Mellow, Ms. McFadden for also partnering with our local institutions. And I know these, some of these students, and not all these students also got to learn more about the COS pathway to law school program. And so I think it's just great, you know, keeping students connected to their local communities, regardless of where they go in the future, knowing that they'll be able to come back and hopefully serve their communities in the future. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Just, I just wanted to say thank you for just being involved in those extracurriculars to mock trial, just for for those kids to find a spot where they feel like they're at home and they can meet other people and they can communicate. It's just, it's just awesome. So thank you for being a part of that.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. The item on the agenda is general public comment. General public comment on any school related topic to be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to twenty minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I have two green sheets here and I'll begin with Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening, board and the interim superintendent and our new superintendent. My name is Crystal Reynolds. I am the mother of three with two children in the district. Although it has been two years too long, I am happy that finally something good will be happening, happening when it comes to masking next Monday. Masking will now be a choice. This is something your constituents have requested for almost a year now. With that happiness, however, there is also great disappointment that our elected board and a couple of pointies have chosen not to push for a more permanent and indefinite stance for all future guidance and mandates from here on out. All healthcare practices such as masking, testing and vaccination should always be at the discretion of the parents that have the utmost invested interest in their children. It disappoints, it disappoints me that so many have shared with you so many stories throughout the last year unfortunate effects of the masking, including bullying of those that have had difficulty wearing or those that have made the choice not to wear. Just at our last meeting, you heard from a young fifth grade boy who was denied breakfast at school and called COVID boy for not wanting to wear his mask. My youngest daughter too was removed from her class last week for making a choice not to wear her mask. We've also heard from Mr. Perez's daughters that were segregated out of their classes and having to wait outside while someone got their lunch for them. There have also been other students in our county that have been escorted out of classrooms by campus police and stripped of academic awards just for exercising their right to breathe. I always hear from this board that you all strive for equity for all students. The most equitable thing you can do for your students, staff and constituents is to amend your resolution and make optional masking indefinite, permanent, no matter what metrics we fall under county-wise, statewide or nationally. We must teach our community to be respectful and tolerant of all individual choice. While I'm, while I am not blind to the fact that bullying can be a two-way street thus far, the students that I have seen that have in fact endured the most negative criticism, criticism so far when it comes to masking are those that have just wanted the individual choice from the beginning. And also just to conclude here, I do have a few more affidavits and notices to serve you tonight. And also we have had some questions from your constituents regarding the RSVP, the phone telephone, just some misunderstandings if that's going to even be an option anymore is to be able to provide public comment by phone. Thank you.
So I can address that real quickly. So the public comment, we're going back to the regular routines that we followed pre-pandemic. So it's not something we'll continue to use at this point. If we get to a point where we have to reemploy that, we will.
Roy Ledwin.
Board members, President Guerrero, Superintendent Cardoza, and especially to every administrator, Mr. Hamilton. On behalf of myself and fellow ASB directors, I want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to go to CADA this past weekend. And I wanted you to know that as an activity director, it's been a very difficult year for us to come out of distant learning to physical learning, back into the classroom. Activities directors have had to be very creative in how we do things. We're accustomed to going into a gymnasium and having a rally and you know, when you can't have a big group in a gymnasium, some of my peers had to improvise and use the stadium, go outside. But the one thing CADA does for us as activity directors, it helps us reestablish our why. Why we are activity directors, why we were appointed to this position or asked to take this position is to energize our kids. And we have to be creative. It hasn't been the smoothest year, but CADA reinvigorates us. We get to see old friends. We get to meet new friends. CADA is the premier location where thousands of activity directors from all over the country come to California specifically. Well, I can't, we were in Reno, okay, but well, but they come there to re-energize themselves to learn new Well, I can't, we were in Reno, okay, but, but they come there to re-energize themselves, to learn new things. So I learned a lot of new things as some of my fellow ASB directors did. And I just personally want to take the time to say thank you very much to allow the funding and that you'll see more creativity now because we've become more energized again. Thank you very much.
We'll move on with our, to another agenda item, and that would be the consent calendar. Would any board member, does any board member want to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull enclosure number two, the warrant list.
Any other item? Is there a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Case per Seleno motions. Is there a second?
A second. I will.
Second, second by Ms. Blair. All in favor?
Student Board Representative Velazquez?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member K. Spears Seleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven O. Student Board Member voting yes.
Mr. Vegas, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I was just going to abstain from the warrant list. As, on advice from legal counsel, I have received advice that though it is not a technical conflict of interest, because I have a sibling currently employed with somebody who does business with the district, there could be, you know, a perception of a conflict of interest. And following with the spirit of the law, I will continue to recuse myself from any warrant list items that are listed with his employer. So that is why I will be abstaining.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant list, enclosure number two.
Second.
Oh.
Motion by Gabby, second by Naylor. All in favor?
Student Board Member Velazquez?
Yes.
Board Member K. Spears Seleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Abstain.
And?
Me.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Motion carries six with one abstention and Board Member votes yes. Student Board Member votes yes.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is enclosure number twenty-five, A-through-G completion improvement grant plan, first read. Ms. Leoni.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Board Members, Community Members. A special welcome to Mr. Schrum. I'm here tonight with the first read of a draft plan for our A-through-G completion grants. The curriculum department here at Visalia has our why there that is absolutely aligned to the, the draft suggestions here. And our collective commitments tonight, I will focus on being vulnerable and honest, communicating and collaborating effectively, being problem solvers, thinking outside the box, and leading and owning our areas of responsibility. Again, our goal for the College and Career Readiness Department, part of the Curriculum Department, is that at least seventy-five percent of the Visalia Unified School District class of 2027 will be college and career-ready on the state dashboard. And this grant has the potential to really help us meet those goals. We always focus on the continuous improvement process, and you're going to see where we are in that process right now with the A-through-G grant. So what is it? The, the A-through-G grant is coming from the state. The purpose is to increase the number of students who are graduating with A-through-G eligibility. That's directly related to our college and career readiness indicators on the state dashboard. It is a very worthy goal. These funds are targeted to serve students in grades nine through twelve, and they can be used to support activities that lead to greater A-through-G course completion. We actually received two grants. We received an access grant, which is for school districts that have less than sixty-seven percent A-through-G completion. And we received an A-through-G learning loss mitigation grant. Tonight, this plan focuses on the A-through-G access grant. So here's a overview of ways that these funds can be used. They can be used for professional development. They can be used for counseling plans, student supports, anything that expands access to A-through-G coursework, student test fees. It's, it's pretty wide-ranging what the funds can be used for. I want to point out our decision-making process in the curriculum department. And we're kind of right in the middle. So, and that's, I realize you probably can't read that. You have it in front of you. But, but the idea is that, that instead of just writing a plan, we're taking it through a series of steps, getting feedback. And so this is our, our first read, and I come to you tonight seeking your feedback and guidance on the next steps before we put the plan together and implement it. So here's what we've done so far. We had a meeting. It was essentially a thought partnership with representatives from across the campus. We had site leadership. We had site counselors. We had district counselors. We had a linked learning teacher lead and district leadership. We brought these folks together. And the first thing we did was identify root causes. We asked folks to consider why our current A-through-G completion rate is what it is. And in the process of that discussion, you can see those five bullets. Those were the, the main reasons why people felt our A-through-G completion rate is what it currently is. Once we had those identified, and they include a lack of understanding of how to, who meet A-through-G and the impact that it has on a student's college readiness, a lack of specific outreach to some targeted groups that, that show equity gap in their A-through-G completion, some current policies that don't match A-through-G requirements specifically in mathematics, lack of a robust credit recovery and acceleration opportunities for A-through-G, and a lack of academic preparation. So this is what was identified going through that root analysis process with that diverse group of folks. And so the next question was, okay, so what do we do about this? And this was the, this is the prioritized list. Once they came up with a list of ways that we can intervene and increase our A-through-G, then the participants ranked them. So you can see that the first is out-of-school opportunities for A-through-G credit recovery, a couple of counseling positions to specifically target groups that are not achieving A-through-G completion at the same rate as other groups, dual enrollment opportunities, and that includes paying for textbooks and transportation, those sorts of things that would allow more students to participate in dual enrollment, vertical teaming for middle and high school counselors, funds for college visits for targeted student populations, pre-AP math in middle school, and avid Excel, which is a language support program in middle school. It's an avid program, but it's not avid. It supports students who are English learners so that they can enter high school having been re-designated and ready for the academic language requirements of an A-through-G course. So that, let me go back. That is our plan. And I want to give a shout out to my amazing team at College and Career Readiness. My coordinator Drew Hernandez is here. We have two district counselors, Joanna Kramer, Paige Leverin, our work-based learning coordinators, Karina Mello is just here, Teresa Polich. We have a counseling technician, Alma Hurtado, and our admin assistant, Deidre Johnson, and they make all this happen. So this is what I hope to get your feedback on, your suggestions, and next steps.
That was a question for the board. Walton?
Okay, a couple things I had in mind is you mentioned our ELD students. I'm, I'm hoping that there are more teachers, period, involved. I noticed there was one teacher. I think we need advice from teachers who are working with our ELD kids and more teachers, period, not just from the academies, involved in all this decision-making. I would also like, I would love to see avid expanded. I think avid's really important. It's an important support for kids. Also, we do, I think it is, the board is interested in that third-year math, but we're looking for more room in the schedule. So at the same time that we implement, that we're thinking of implementing that seven or eight-period block, that is exactly when we start our third year of math. And let me just finish. The reason I want to wait on the math is because I fear for our elective programs. I don't want our elective programs to suffer because kids have to take three years of math instead of being able to take jazz band, regular band, you know, choir. We have kids, kids that are in academies so that they have more room in their schedule for that third year of math.
So it all happens at once, that change?
That's what I was suggesting.
If I could chime in on that, I think we should be conscious about that absolutely with our electives. But I'm also conscious about, in one of our previous presentations, we had around, and please correct me, I don't remember the exact statistic, but I want to say it was about half or maybe more than half of seniors didn't have a full schedule.
It was fifty-seven percent.
Fifty-seven, so okay, a little bit over half. And so I think to me, that speaks to possibly some room for those individuals. And I'd love to be more involved in these conversations around math. Two questions with that. Are there any, any policies that we have that do not currently align with A-through-G aside from math? That's my first question.
That's a really good question. I, I hope this semester to learn more about which courses are the G-elect, are approved as G-elective because in looking at the data about our current seniors and where they are in their A-through-G completion, I was very surprised to find out that it was the G-elective that many students are missing. And we have such fabulous elective programs. So that's possibly the case, but I don't know.
Okay.
It's, it's really the, the math that's truly not in line.
The G is definitely something to pay attention to, and I'd love to be, learn more about that. My second question was, looking forward, and we're all, you know, always trying to think long-term and long game here. We know that ethnic studies will become a graduation requirement, you know, starting in a few years. And I'm wondering, has there been any information on how that may align within A-through-G? As in, that will be incorporated, or will that only be a graduation requirement? I'm just thinking, I know it's, it's now a CSU requirement. It's going to be a community college requirement. It's going to be a high school requirement. And is that only going to be a graduation requirement? Or will that fit in through the A-through-G pathway essentially? Will students fulfill some aspect of A-through-G in taking an ethnic studies course? And if so, then maybe we want to think about how we can be proactive in expanding ethnic studies as opposed to waiting for that mandate to come in, so that way students are well-versed, they're expecting it, it's already a graduation requirement. So we push forward. So I'd appreciate any info on that, if you have any.
I will bring that to you.
Ms. Gabby?
So thank you for your report and for asking for the input. Couple things. So on the A-to-G, I also kind of, what Mr. Vegas was saying, remember, I think, and not, I'm not suggesting that we lower our requirements, but there are also a few things, I don't know if it's history or something, that we tend to be above even what that requirement was. So maybe if it's even looking at like a sample schedule of even like, how would a band student, like what could their four years look like? Were they still completed that? I'm kind of like a visual, like, you know, like what's, what could that adventure look like? Even maybe something to give to the parents. And then, you know, just the thing I would be interested in too is that counseling part. I know we have high school counselors. Do we have enough? I mean, like, what is their, their caseload? And then what does that system look like? Like where, when do they first meet with the student? Is it early enough? Like, do they meet with parents? You know, do we have Spanish-speaking counselors when needed? Or just kind of how that looks? Because I know everyone at the high school is working really hard and has fabulous intentions, but just like, what does that system look like to make sure a student doesn't kind of fall through?
And just to kind of piggyback on that a little bit, you know, we have sophomore counseling, but I don't know how aggressive that is. And I think that's something that, you know, when I was at the site, we did that freshman year. And sometimes you push that back too far. It's, it's, they've gone too far and it's too hard to recover. So I would really appreciate, we look at that and make sure that we kind of reinstitute that at the early on in their freshman year. And I like the fact that, you know, you give a, give a visual to parents, hey, it's kind of like you do in college. This is where you want to go, and these are the classes you need to take. Because you, we do have great arts and we do have great electives, and we need to incorporate those and, and get a full schedule and maybe not have so many teacher aides. But I appreciate all the time. And I also would like to see on your input for the decision-making, just to involve a lot of the staff, the teachers, because you get a lot from teachers. We can increase that, that one little square. Appreciate it.
I, was I talking about this today, Vicky, or was it Paige about the, the YouTube page? Career in College has a YouTube page, and it literally has all these videos of what to do as a freshman, what to do as a sophomore, how to get prepared as a junior. I mean, I thought the, I went in and looked, if you just go into YouTube and in the search bar, right, Visalia Unified School District, College and Career Readiness, or Visalia Unified College and Career, there is so many videos on what to do and how to get there. So, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one more. That's a good point because they do have that. And, and if we get to block schedule, which would be nice, I know that at LD Amante, we have that one short class period that they could institute those videos, you know, or even in your college career class to institute those, and that is a freshman year. And sometimes they take in the summer. So if we can look at where can we best place those, so we get that information out.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more. Sorry. You know, and also just thinking, could we ask students, you know, maybe even students that didn't meet the requirements? Like what would have helped you? Or, you know, like students on both sides, just some of our seniors, we can talk to them about what might be useful. You know, they're always a great perspective.
Great call out. Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter? Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And this was the first read. We'll move on to Student Representative's Report. Ms. Miria Velazquez.
Hi, I'm going to begin my report with VCIS. Their spring progress reports are going to be distributed the week of March fourteenth. And then moving on to LD, they're hosting a volleyball tournament, and students are allowed to sign up with any team of their choice. And they'll also be hosting a rally, a no, a no-hate tour on Thursday. And they're getting ready to decorate the school for Women's History Month. And they're also going to honor some female staff members that are there on campus. And moving on to Golden West, our, our cheer squad is holding their tryouts and preparing for the, for next year's season. And our FFA is getting ready to host Western Week in two weeks with lunchtime activities and dress-up days. And at Mount Whitney, they just hosted their eighth-grade visit with a club fair, campus tours, and performances from the Performing Arts. And their ASB is busy planning the Spring Fling Dance with the sports theme. And moving on to Redwood, they held their annual buffball tournament with over ten teams and a huge audience. And the Redwood TSF made letters to all those two soldiers last Saturday for a chance to gain some volunteer hours. And that concludes my board report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and again, as, as the board, or I say this, but we do appreciate your reports. We'd like to hear what's going on in the school, then you bring that to us. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to board member reports. Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Guerrero. I was able to attend the CCEMC conference with some members of our curriculum team to learn more about opportunities for increasing dual enrollment at high school districts and partnership with community colleges. And so really excited about, you know, the potential for students in the future to possibly be able to graduate with an associate's degree at the same time that they receive their high school diploma. I think it's been, it's happening in a lot of parts of the state, and so I'm really excited to see how we can work with our partners here at COS and here at the USD to make sure that students are prepared. Because there's so many benefits in addition to, you know, obtaining that associate's, but building that college culture and career for a student who, you know, realizes that, hey, I can do this. And also the enormous amount of money that they save, being that, you know, we as a district cover those costs. And it's just an amazing opportunity for students. And so I'm really looking forward to being a part of those conversations and hopefully playing a role in that. I was happy to see during our board policy committee, some forward movement on my proposed sort of amendment to allow our future meeting video recordings to be archived indefinitely. I look forward to having this come before the full board and hopefully earning the support. the support of you, my colleagues, in order to be more accessible and transparent and inclusive to members of the public. I was also able to attend a training from CSBA on attending the foundations of effective governance and sending direction and attended a VAPA advisory advisory committee where I listened to concerns from some of our VAPA teachers and transfer around transportation equipment, funding from dance bars to art supplies and band instruments. And so I'm really grateful to listen to all those concerns and I hope that we can continue these conversations with our current superintendent, our new superintendent, to ensure that we're able to provide equitable resources and transportation to all of our visual and performing arts groups, you know, whether that's our march events, percussion, performing arts groups, choirs, drama, et cetera. And then just the other day, I was able to visit Crowley. So I want to thank Principal Menes for some of the exciting work that's going on there and for allowing me to share some of that time visiting classrooms and learning more about some of the great things that they're doing there. And also some of the challenges, such as social emotional challenges that students have been facing and, you know, some of the things that we might be able to do to better support that. And then finally, I just wanted to invite our community members, there's going to be a combined concert on Thursday night. This is going to be Golden West and COS, I think it's the COS symphonic band. Completely free to the public, it's going to be at the theater, COS Theater starts at seven thirty PM. So please go out and support our fine musicians. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to report that the new science textbooks for high school are available to view at the Learning Center, Vislay Learning Center. And they will be all month and also the world language textbooks for French and Spanish. Some of those are junior high and high school, those were all will also be at the Learning Center. I was able to visit Sequoia High School last Monday, the twenty eighth, I toured the school after sitting with Principal Adolfo Reyes and listening to his vision for Sequoia and I just love that school and I just loved him. He was just so passionate about his school. He said, Sequoia is a school of restoration. When students walk through the doors of Sequoia, they're able to start over with new opportunities and a fresh start. He and his team rally around their students as resources and help the children to meet goals. He talked about how the classroom is sacred and that their instruction time is incredibly important and valuable. He also shared that he understands their social emotional aspects need to be in place in order for them to really move forward academically. So he's very forthright with the rules of their school and make sure that those expectations are followed so that everyone feels safe and understood. And all of the teachers just were so passionate about what they do and how they care for their students. I also talked to Paige and Vicky, Paige Leverin and Vicky Leoni today. They've been doing these webinars, Ignite Your Curiosity has been a monthly series of webinars for students and parents to hear from various industry leaders and it's so interesting, I was having a hard time finding it through our website, but you can, you can find it through our website or you can just get on, like I said, to YouTube and VUSD has a college and career page and elementary through high school, they can get on and look at these different videos where they're asking questions, any kids can log on to the Zoom and be a part of the Zoom conversation and ask conversation, ask questions of different career pathways. So they had a zoologist, a geologist, police officers. This month there on the twenty-third, I believe they're doing there's the webinar is with a media broadcast program director. So the last thing I wanted to ask was, will our student representatives get to come and sit with us on the dais now? Is that possible?
Yeah, I think that is possible. So we will work, work through that. If that's an option, they would like to join us, we'd love to have them.
We want you at least once a month. Yes.
That would be awesome. Um, I'm next, right? Thanks, President Guerrero. I just wanted to say again, welcome to our future superintendent. We're so happy that you were able to come out and be with us for this week too, not just for tonight. I did a couple of weeks ago, go to all the charter schools in our school, I think, I think in our district, I think most of us have done that now. I went with Mr. Villegas and I just wanted to thank all those principals for having us come on campus. I loved seeing all of the different campuses. Then a special shout out to Mr. Baca over there for setting it up and for carrying my baby around at one of the the sites. I went to the Redwood High School Boys, I actually went to a couple of their soccer games, they won the Valley Championship, which was super, super fun. They then had their state playoff game. Unfortunately, they lost that by one goal. But still such an amazing season for them and congratulations on winning the Valley Championship. I also then went to the Mount Whitney High School Boys Basketball Game. I saw Mr. Gridiron there too. And they also won the Valley Championship this year and they unfortunately lost their playoff game, I know state playoff game only by a couple of points. And I think it's really important to point out that Whitney has one of our lower enrollment numbers. I think they hover about seventeen hundred, is that right, Mr. Cardoza? And the school that they played, they only lost, I think by four points, three points, something like that. Had over three thousand students at their school. So the fact that we are competing, that those boys are competing on that level against schools that have high, high enrollment over us, it would almost be like if Redwood and Whitney were combined is just so impressive and huge shout out to them. I also wanted to know or kind of, I guess, ask if when we have our, I know we're going to go to Mount Whitney on, I think it's April first. I think it'd be really nice to honor some of the things, like some of the students and and specifically the basketball team, if we can get them to say, you know, congratulations on your championship. And I apologize, there could be another championship and another sport that I missed at Mount Whitney sometime this year. But I think it would be cool for us to honor the students on their campus and let them know that we are paying attention and and rooting for them. And then I'm looking forward to this week to visiting Mountain View to check out our dual immersion program with Mr. Schrum and then Royal.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
Yeah, I also visited a couple of schools. I visited Mount Whitney and just had a great talk with Principal Aguilar. You know, sharing his vision and just what he's done in the short time that he's been there with the communication with the staff and 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 just, you know, surveys and finding out where they they need support. And he's just really, his passion for that school was just amazing. Took and we went, visited a few classrooms, I went into one classroom and the teacher just said, you know, wonderful things about him, just was so excited to have him there as principal. The athletic director came in and talked to me for a little while and just, you know, some of the things, I'm going to kind of echo what trustee Megan Casper Salano said, you know, they have such a low enrollment and I just, I told him, hey, just send me a couple of things that, you know, you're doing as far as athletics, because, you know, I'm hearing what's what's going on, but you know, again, their basketball team won the Valley and they've got the the lowest enrollment. That's amazing, you know, and and I babysat my granddaughter, so my son and daughter who work at Mount Whitney could go to the game, but they came back and said, hey, that was the greatest game we ever saw. They only lost by like three points or four points. And I thought that that's amazing, but you know, their competitive cheer program, they made placing second in the CIF regionals. Varsity softball, winning their home opener nine to two over Sunnyside, the girls varsity swim team. They're doing amazing things with a low enrollment. And I just got a shout out to our, to their, that program. I also visited Annie R. Mitchell and got the, took a long tour with Natalie Taylor, who's the principal there, just wonderful. And again, her vision is great too. I got to give certificates, I'll help with the certificates for student of the week. We visited their language center where they were testing some of the English learners with the LPAC. Went into some, you know, kindergarten class where they were doing symphonic awareness, they, all the kids were standing up, they were in their little squares and they were doing all the, you know, words on the screen. It was just, I I just was so amazed at what we have going in our classrooms. Went into a fifth grade class where the students and she even took pictures, I have a picture of two students that came up and just wanted to share their reflections from their book club. And it was intricate, there was like five pages and they had it all outlined and and I just thought, man, we are, we are really doing a great job educating our kids. And the interactive reader, the one challenge they are having though, because I said, hey, give me one challenge, one of the challenges they are having is that that font is something else, which is doing, they use a lot at that school. And there, we used to send them to training, but we haven't done that and I know it's COVID. But what I, what I would like to request is with our curriculum department is to get with that school and get some training set up because at that training, they get free books and they need books. And so if we can just, our, my task would be, would ask that our curriculum department reach out to our elementary schools and find out what it is they really need. If Fontis and Penel is what they use, let's get them trained, you know, if they need whatever, whatever works because they're working hard. The other takeaway was the TOSAs, they have full time TOSAs on their campus. I think they have three at Annie R. Mitchell. And they are doing an amazing job. They're very valuable, they work with the new teachers, they give them teaching strategies in the classroom. I could go on and on because I was so excited. I'm just, you know, I just, the the support and the modeling that they show is just, is just unbelievable. And it's a, to me, it's the most valuable thing because they have them on their campus. It's not just drop in and come back out. They're there, they're testing kids, they're pulling, they're modeling for teachers. Best use of our funds that I can think of, I'm hands down TOSAs is where we need to be. And I also want to welcome our new superintendent. I'm just so excited, can't wait, you know, I just couldn't wait for this day. So thank you and welcome to Vislay Unified.
Skaby.
Um, yes, so definitely, you know, we've all mentioned some of the highlights in these last couple of weeks. Again, Read Across America, thank you to everyone that made literacy exciting and fun and invited us to go read. That was awesome. You know, and while at GLC, again, they're working on their mascots to bring to us, but again, our kids, they are, they're so amazing. One of them told me he wanted their mascot to be a B because it spreads kindness and it's like pollen, it could spread ideas and kindness. And it's like, when we really just stop and listen to them, they they're so amazing. And got to visit Linwood and specifically go to their intervention classes and it was really awesome to hear Mr. Bishop, actually Dr. Bishop, talk about that really the key to it has been the collaboration between the general ed teachers and the intervention teachers and how like the adults are really, you know, putting kids first and and what they need there. And and that's why they're showing such progress. This, several of us on Sunday were over at VCIS for their WASC accreditation and I know that is to that team over there, that's a tremendous amount of work, but it's also just such a great opportunity to highlight what's going on over there and they're doing fabulous work. I can't say enough about what's what's happening over there. So again, thank you. We're so excited, Mr. Schrum, for your leadership to come to Vislay Unified. But we're also excited for you to see the greatness in Vislay Unified. We have amazing students and adults and we're just excited for the future.
Ms. Camonia.
Well, I'm going to be out of commission for a while. My mom's going to need my help for about a month, so I won't be visiting schools for a while. But I do want to welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Schrum. I'd like to invite the community to a meet and greet tomorrow at four to six at VTAC. So you can all come out and meet him.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo that welcome to everybody that any and everybody from our school community to go out to VTAC between four and six and that way you can personally meet Mr. Schrum. And Mr. Schrum, welcome. I know you're going to be busy in the next few days visiting school sites with board members and going to meetings here and there and receptions and whatnot. And hopefully you have a good time and we're glad you're here. But I also really want to thank someone who's not here and and he's kind of stepping back now and that is that I want to thank to Larry County Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Tim Hayer. You know, he, he led our superintendent search. And, you know, it was important for the board to do a process that would, you know, engage the community, but also that would be nationwide. And, you know, I think coming from, is it Tennessee? Atlanta, Georgia. Okay, Atlanta, Georgia. I think that that kind of puts an exclamation point on a national search, but on other matters, I was, I was able to visit Ivan Hall Elementary and I read to a group of kindergartners. And I'll tell you, lately I've been around secondary students, middle school and high school. And it felt really good being around the kindergarten class and especially if I read to them and they're not going to complain, they're happy, they're smiling and, you know, they enjoyed the books, okay? And I just had a good time with them. But and I also was able to go to Sequoia High School and we, there was a Hoven Noble closing ceremony on their program there and I participated in that. And that was a good ceremony there. And then I got out to Golden West softball and I watched Golden West Blazers beat Central Valley Christian in a softball game. Very good game. It was, I think the score was three to two. Okay, so with that, super intern superintendent report.
Thank you, President Guerrero. I, first of all, I want to again welcome Mr. Schrum. I look forward to the work we'll do together over the next few months to transition. I'm here to support and learn too. So look forward to our work together and keeping this district moving forward. So welcome. I also wanted to share, you know, I had an opportunity to go read at Viva Blunt Elementary School and and something I wanted to share is, you know, I read in the kindergarten classes first. We had, I think, four kindergarten classes in one room and so I was circled by little, little kids and they're always so cute and and it was fun to read to them, but I also read in fifth and sixth grade and what warmed my heart is in sixth grade is that I was circled on the floor on the carpet by sixth grade students who came to the carpet and sat just like they did, whether they're in kindergarten or not. And that just speaks to the culture of a school and the work that can happen within us, within a school to keep learning and it's okay, it's not too cool to come and listen to someone read Dr. Seuss to you on the carpet in sixth grade. So that was warming to my heart to see that, that's work, that's that's ongoing and kudos to the leadership there. Also, there's one other thing here. Oh, in regards to Fontis and Penel, so we had a conversation with Mr. Sullivan just recently and and he's digging in to find out what sites have materials wise, training wise and putting together some, we have an opportunity to bring sites up to speed with Fontis and Penel with training materials and everything that we need to move forward with that. So with that, that's my report.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Staff dismissal. Our next item on the agenda is administrative panel recommendation actions, recommend expulsion, expulsions, enclosure number twenty-six. I need a motion.
All motion?
There's a motion by Ms. Blair. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Ms. Gabby. All in favor?
Student board member, oh, no, sorry, you abstaining there. I think she left, sorry. Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Naylor?
Yes.
Board member Villegas?
Yes.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member K. Spears Salano?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. We'll move on to our general agenda. Our general agenda enclosure number twenty-seven, public hearing, initial contract negotiation proposal with the California School Employees Association, CSEA. Chapter eighty-three to Visley Unified School District for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
Good evening, board president.
Open the public hearing.
Sorry, President Guerrero. Good evening, Board President Guerrero, fellow trustees, Superintendent Cardoza and new superintendent, Mr. Schrum. I'm Andrew Sanchez and I'm a full-time specialized learning center support technician for our Vislay Unified School District while also serving as our CSEA Visley Chapter Eighty-Three's president. As President Guerrero said, I'm here today to present our second reading for our second proposal for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three reopener contract terms. Government code section three five four seven requires all initial contract proposals of the board and an employee organization which relate to matters within the scope of representation be presented at a public meeting and be made available for public review on the district's website for a reasonable period of time. The California School Employees Association presented their interests at the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two board meeting. The initial contract interest slash proposal has been available for public review. The board is to hold a public hearing and allow the public to comment on the public's, I'm sorry, on the proposal submitted by CSEA prior to formally acknowledging receipt of CSEA's initial contract initial proposal. The proposal reads as follows. Article ten, health and welfare benefits, the district shall provide for the full increased cost of the current health and welfare benefits for all eligible employees and their dependents. Article eleven, holidays, CSEA and VUSD mutually agree to open article eleven holidays to negotiate the Juneteenth holiday. Article thirteen, salary, CSEA seeks a fair and equitable increase to the classified salary schedule. CSEA would like to propose longevity language and CSEA also seeks a one-time off-salary schedule payment for all classified staff. And CSEA also seeks a one-time off-salary schedule payment for all classified staff. And all other late, uh, articles and or language not specifically listed shall remain status quo. CSEA Visel Chapter Eighty-three looks forward to engaging in a faithful and positive negotiations that will benefit all classified staff and most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Close that public hearing. And our next item on the agenda is enclosure number twenty-eight.
I think we need to make a motion.
Oh, that's right, we need a motion on this to accept. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
No, this is a, well, public comment, is there any public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Acknowledging the receipt.
Okay. Move to knowledge receipt.
Second. Okay.
President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Naylor?
Yes.
Board member Vegas?
Yes.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member Casebeers Saleno?
Yes.
Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion carries seven oh.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is enclosure number twenty-eight. And this also is a public hearing by Visel Unified School District interest for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three classified negotiation, second read. Mr. De Mayo?
Thank you, President Guerrero and interim superintendent Cardoza and also new superintendent Schrum. Uh, I am here tonight with my colleague, Mr. Sanchez. Um, and Mr. Schrum, you'll be glad to know that we have a wonderful bargaining unit with our classified employees. So you'll be thrilled to meet them. But as Andrew suggested, we are jumping into our negotiation season. We were with you two weeks ago when we shared our initial proposal, gave you an opportunity to consider the things we were working on and our community a chance to kind of consider that, see if they had anything, um, they wanted to add to that. So let me share with you tonight, just as a reminder of the things we're going to be working on together as a team. First of all, I wanted to share with your interests, so you know from a district standpoint where we're starting from. Our interests are thus, providing the highest possible education for our children is our first priority. We want to support employees and maintain staff at the most efficient levels. We want to ensure extra and co-curricular programs and opportunities for students. We want to maintain districts' reserves to preserve instructional programs and goals for all students during academic cycles. And we want to engage in an open and honest exchange of information through collaboration and objective negotiations with the California School Employees Association, Chapter Eighty-three. So to do that, we are suggesting our proposal is article five, which is organizational rights, article ten, which is employee benefits, and article thirteen, which is salary. And as Andrew also mentioned, we do want to mutually open that holiday section so we can talk about those things that were as listed. So with that said, that is our initial proposal for your consideration.
Okay, I need, I need a motion to accept.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Board member Naylor?
Yes.
Board member Vegas?
Yes.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member Casebeers Saleno?
Yes, and I think just to make sure we're clear on the language, we're accepting the review, we're not approving it.
Yeah. Okay. Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes, President Guerrero?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you, board.
Close the public hearing. We'll move on to enclosure number twenty-nine, which is Visel Unified School District's second interim financial report. Presenter Nathan Hernandez and Jessica Villarreal.
Good evening, President Guerrero, all members of the board, Mr. Cardoza and welcome, Mr. Schrum. We'll spend lots of time talking about this. Um, tonight we have our second interim financial report to, um, coming to the board. Uh, this is a, a report as of January thirty-first. And, um, the information that you're gonna see tonight is really an update between our first interim and second interim. Uh, most of the changes in, in our budget from our adopt, from our adoption happened between adopted budget and first interim. So you won't see a lot of changes between the two reports, but we'll talk a little bit about what we shared in first interim report. Um, so we're gonna talk a little bit about the, the budget. We'll go through some highlights and we'll spend some time focusing on the unrestricted side of the budget. We'll look at our multi-year projections out the, uh, the current year and the next two years. And then we'll take a look at what we're expecting, um, some challenges that we face for, for next fiscal year. I'm joined by Ms. Villarreal and she is going to do the heavy lifting here.
Good evening. So this, uh, chart illustrates the budget and L cap development process. And so, um, back in January, when the governor released his proposal, that kind of kicked off two things, our budget development for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then also gave us a chance to revise our current year budget and present, which is what is, what is included in our second interim report. Then from second interim, um, like I mentioned, we are starting the budget development process already looking to next year. And so we'll bring that to you in June. And then, um, July will kick off our twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. And then, uh, sometime in September, we'll present to you what actually happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, because all of it is just a proposal until it all, and, uh, actually happened, so. So our second interim budget report is really, um, just a chance for us to come to you and tell you what has changed since, uh, the budget was adopted. Um, and then more specifically, what has changed since the last time you presented to you for first interim? Um, it's a chance for us to take a look at our, um, financials and make sure that we are able to meet our financial obligations in the current year and the next two out years. So in being able to do so, um, we will, um, gives us a positive certification. And what that really means is that we're able to meet our three percent minimum reserve. And again, we're able to meet our financial obligations in the two out years. So this slide goes over the general fund summary. So in the left column, it shows our first interim and what we had for revenue and expenditures. And so we were showing a deficit of thirty-five point five million dollars. And then in second interim, we had an increase of about twenty-two million in revenue and now showing a, a deficit of thirty-eight point three million. And we'll go into detail what that looks like, um, in the next slide. So this slide looks at what the unrestricted, um, changes, excuse me, what the changes were in the general fund unrestricted portion. We look specifically at the unrestricted portion because the restricted revenues are, you know, have strings attached and are specific and they balance within. So if, um, the unrestricted portion is our, um, the majority of our operational budget. And that's where we'd have to look if, if we needed to tighten anything. So looking at that portion specifically, there are minimal changes between first interim and second interim. Um, nothing major to point out there. So, um, looking at general fund unrestricted portion and the one-time cost. So at second interim, we're showing a twenty-one point two million dollar deficit. And that's due to the one-time, um, costs that we've explained at first interim, but I'll go quickly over it tonight. So we had the L cap, um, for supplemental and instructional materials at nine million dollars. We had the one-time cost for independent study for, with BUDM at five point eight million. And then, uh, the purchase of Grace Community Property at five point three million. Um, and then some of the site donations and carryover that come to about two million dollars. So if we take all those one-time costs out, they total about twenty-two point nine million dollars. You'll see that what that brings us to a surplus of one point six million dollars, which shows a balanced budget. So our, the, the governor's budget includes some assumptions that we include in our multi-year projection. One thing is the cost of living adjustments for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. We're looking at a five point thirty-three percent COLA and a three point sixty-one percent COLA, um, respectively. Also, in the ADA, we projected a decline of almost thirteen hundred students. And that's including the growth that we're expecting for the TK expansion. Um, our multi-year projection does not include the proposal that the governor has included or, which is a three-year average of the ADA. Um, well, we have a specific slide on that, on how that would look if we were to go that route. We also again, removed the one-time costs and the, that we've explained in the previous slide in our multi-year projections in the out years. We've included step and column and the increases in pension costs. And then the other thing that I just want to remind everyone is that in twenty-two, twenty-three, the reserves, the cap will be, has been triggered and that's a ten percent cap on our budget reserves. So I'll explain a little bit more on how that looks for us. Currently at second interim, we're at six, six point twenty-five percent on our reserves. So it's like a thirty-six million dollar amount there. So we're a little, we're a little ways on that ten percent cap currently. So the multi-year projection for unrestricted, um, this is as, um, our current ADA, uh, not looking at the three-year average. And so for twenty-one, twenty-two, we explained how the twenty-one million dollar deficit is due to a lot of the one-time costs. So looking at twenty-two, twenty-three, we are showing a balanced budget with a one million dollar surplus. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, a four million dollar surplus. So looking at the three-year average for ADA, that would give us an increase in revenue in twenty-two, twenty-three of about six million dollars. And then for twenty-three, twenty-four, it would be about almost two million dollars. And so that did bump our surplus to seven point six million in twenty-two, twenty-three and six million in twenty-three, twenty-four. So that does get us a little bit closer to that ten percent reserve cap that, um, that the, uh, that will be triggered in twenty-two, twenty-three. So we will have to look at that. And just as a reminder, they do recommend that we have about fifteen to seventeen percent reserves being able to cover two months of operational costs. For us is about seventy-two million. So again, currently at second interim, we're at thirty-six million. So we would only be able to cover about one month of operational costs, so.
So, uh, we, we shared, um, at the end of January, that the governor's issued his proposal for next year. We talked a little bit about how that impacts our NYPD. Um, the, the surplus at the state is projected to be over forty-five billion, uh, for this year. And so we know last year there were lots of new programs. Um, this year he's not projecting, uh, too many new programs for us for next year. So we're pretty glad about that. Um, but he is expanding on his, um, priorities, which are the early education and the expanded learning opportunities program or ELOP for, uh, after school and extended day. Um, there is also some additional funding for, uh, facilities and transportation. Again, that's all in his proposal. Um, we'll get a revision in May, um, and we'll see if some of those things stick or if there are some adjustments and changes. Uh, we do still have challenges, as we mentioned, we have increases in our pension costs. Um, the declining enrollment that we mentioned is higher than what we projected. That's mostly because of students who've been absent more. Um, so our enrollment is actually down by about four hundred students, but the ADA is down much more than that because of, um, because of absences. So, um, hopefully, uh, with the changes and tracing and all of those things for next year, that will improve. Um, and then we're still, you know, dealing with impact of staffing shortages, inflation. Somebody told me gas was expensive, I don't know the gas cost these days, but, um, it, you know, all of those things are impacting district finances, so. If that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Um, first, thank you. Um, is the, so the ADA adjustment is still just a proposal?
The three-year averaging is still a proposal. There's, uh, there's probably at least ten proposals, um, in the legislature right now. That was the governor's proposal. So we imagine that there will be some version of that, uh, when the state adopts its budget. But that's, we're not putting that into our, our NYPD until something gets approved.
Any other questions? Any other, uh, any, is there any public comment on this item?
I'm sorry, okay, can I ask one more on that same thing? Are any of the proposals that we, you would go to an enrollment based rather than an attendance based?
Yes, I have seen, um, an enrollment-based proposal. Uh, I, I don't know exactly how that would impact our finances, but there are enrollment proposals out there.
No other questions? I need a motion on this item?
So moved.
Motion to accept?
All second. Yes.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Board member Vegas?
Yes.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member Casebeers Saleno?
Yes.
Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes, President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Naylor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, eight oh.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is major, measure E, boundary financing results, enclosure number thirty.
Good evening again, uh, onto a, a good news item. Um, we brought, um, this to the board last year, late last year, an item to potentially refinance the two thousand and thirteen measure E bonds. Um, and so the board approved the resolution to authorize that sale. We did have a successful sale last month. And I'm joined via Zoom by Mr. Matt Colker from Government Financial Strategies. And he's going to share with you all the great results.
Good evening and thanks for having me. And thank you, Mason. Um, so let's keep this brief and back over the highlight, the sale and how it helped the district's taxpayers. So it was a brief agenda, just going to the sale process and results and what the next steps are. Uh, so as Nathan mentioned, we had the sale last month is on February tenth, um, at eight oh five in the morning. That's when all the results were, or bids were due. Uh, we used various mechanisms to get the word out. So, you know, it's kind of listened through here, the, the big one being, um, Avia, uh, which is, they had, called themselves a printer, but they're more of an online provider now. And a bond buyer, which is kind of like the Wall Street Journal for municipal markets. And the parity system is a bidding platform that also, uh, vast majority of underwriters utilize, um, to keep track of things. So all, we make sure all the notifications are out. Um, and then we do not have any sort of special limitations, like are we only gonna take bids from California banks? Or, um, big banks or small banks or any sort of those, pretty much anybody interested, we, we allow, uh, have so much flexibility in the parameters as we do to make sure we garner as much interest. And the result being that, you know, we want as much competition as possible because enough academic studies out there have indicated that the more competition means we get better results. Also, we had three bids that came from, um, I would say all over the country is mostly on, for the east side. Uh, but this is just where the offices were, where these banks bid from. You can see, might have heard, probably heard of Wells Fargo and know that they're not just based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. This happens to be the office of the bidder, um, Raymond James and Baird have also been pretty active, um, in the past with Viselia Bonds, so, uh, happy to see all of them participate. And as far as the summary, which is the three bids, they were all fairly close. You can see the, the bottom down here, where you have the, the top bid was from Robert Baird. And it just barely eked out, uh, the bid from Wells Fargo. As you can see that the estimated difference between the, from a present value basis was not even two hundred dollars a different, you know, difference. And then the, the bid from Raymond James came in seventy thousand dollars higher. Um, so all three bids were, were pretty, pretty strong with the, the Robert Baird one just barely eking it out over Wells Fargo. Oh, um, apologize if it's hard to read on the smaller screen, but, uh, the full, the charts are in the for reference section. Somebody wants to look back there without zooming in. So the top left, looking at the interest rates, the, the, the top two, um, lines are showing, um, the comparison of actual rates, whereas the bottom two are showing what the benchmark rates were. So you can see that the very bottom line is, uh, the kind of light blue is showing what the, uh, market rates were, uh, back in December, when we first brought this to your attention. And you can see the rates were going up slightly since then. So prior to the sale, we were keeping a close eye. We did not, you know, we're part of the resolution that you approved did have, um, minimum savings thresholds. We were making sure that we weren't going to drop low that, but we were keeping an eye on the rates. And we ended up getting rates that weren't too far off from what we wanted. Um, so it came in pretty strong. Um, on the bottom right, we're showing what the sources and uses were. So the pre-refi estimate compared to the, what we actually got, you can see that the, the big one to point out here is the par amount. So while the rates were going out, um, which, you know, we've been, obviously don't like having slightly higher rates than what we estimated. But on the offset of that, on the offset of that is that, since this is a refi where we're going to take the money, we put in escrow and it's going to pay it off in, in a couple of years. That money when we deposit is accruing interest itself, so actually, the morning of the sale, there was a nice little jump up in escrow rates, so we got a better rate than we estimated, which required us to borrow less money. So you can see that we borrowed eight hundred and seventy thousand less than we were estimating, so that kind of offset the increase in the rates. The rest of the estimates were not as different than that, but that was kind of a positive aspect of interest rates increasing. Those means as far as savings go, so you can see that debt service has, we saved six million dollars to taxpayers and that equates to about a dollar forty, four hundred thousand of assessed value over the life of the, of the bond, so. You know, look at it, like a three hundred thousand dollar home would be saving, you know, three times that, so about four dollars. So, you know, it's not, we're not talking, people are going out and buying a new car with, with the savings, but every little bit helps and should, shows good fiscal stewardship, but still six million dollars overall that taxpayers are saving collectively. And so one of the things you might recall that we look at is what's in net present value savings, just, just kind of looking at it, taking the time value money into consideration. So we did drop a little bit here, we had estimated a lower five million, we got four point six million on net present value. However, we do look at as percentage of their funded par amount, which still is, still lower than what we had estimated, but still well above the recommended threshold, which you can see, it's a little, probably hard to read, but the, the top line is, is what we recommend as far as proceed, if it's above that, and we're definitely well above it. And then since this was an advanced refunding, we also look at the negative arbitrage, which is the difference between, as I mentioned before, we take that money and put it into an escrow, which is accumulating interest. So we look at the difference between that interest and what we're paying on the bonds. So you can see that the, this negative arbitrage is a small amount compared to the actual savings, we actually ended up better than what were, the pre-sale estimate was due to that the lower amount being borrowed. And recommendation was to be at least three to one on that ratio. So the next steps is that, you know, both the year and a few months from now, is when the actual call happens, so escrow will be closed out and that money will be used to redeem the two thousand thirteen certificates and then and ongoing administration, it will continue, we do this array for the district, but since these are publicly offered bonds, the continuing schedule report is still due every April fifteenth, which we work with Nathan on. And there's also the state decided to have their own requirement every year for debt, so every January thirty-first, we have to file a report with the state CDAC agency and then continue monitoring for future refinancing opportunities. These do have a call date in the future and as well as some of the other outstanding bonds that if there's an opportunity to save the taxpayers more, we will bring that to your attention. And with that, I'll turn over to any questions.
Are there any questions from any board members? Thank you for the report, it's information only.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is enclosure number thirty-one, resolution of release and non-employment of temporary employees. Enclosure thirty-one. And that would be D. Samovia.
So, Mr. Guerrero, is it okay if I present from here?
Yeah.
Thank you. So tonight I bring to you enclosure thirty-one, the resolution and release of non-employment for temporary employees. And we brought this to you earlier this year, but we've had several employees hired after that fact, and so there, those positions were temporary, so I bring this list tonight.
So this is an action item, we need a motion on this to accept this resolution, it appears. Is there a motion?
I move.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move.
Okay, okay, Miss Camonia makes a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Ms. Gabby, all in favor?
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member K. Spears Salena?
Yeah.
Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Naylor?
Yes.
Board member Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Okay, there are no more items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.